The Finance and Law Subcommittee will come to order. Roll call, Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present. There are no student activities today. We have a donation from Jordan's Furniture of 20 black and white Ricoh printers and 10 color Ricoh printers valued at about $12,000. A letter of appreciation has been sent and be in order to accept the donation with thanks.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all the papers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Then we have our budget update and report on expenditures for the quarter. Mrs. Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. In your agenda there, you will see the three-quarter, three-budget updates for the revolving accounts, the grants, and the first one that we're going to look at is the FY22 appropriation. So if you look at FY22 appropriation, there are still, there are some lines that have exceeded the 100% and other lines that were not even close to, well, a quarter percent in all. So if we're looking at the very bottom of it to look at the total budget expended, right now at this quarter three, which goes through March of 2022, we're at just about 59% of our budget has been expended. And right now, as you see too, there are some charges that have been hitting the appropriation that will be transferred to the ESER grant. So that will again alleviate some of the funding here. Any questions on the line items that you see in front of you?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I guess it's just part of the system, how it works, where things will eventually catch up. I know some folks get very concerned at, you know, 19% expensed on one item, but yet 120 on another. So I appreciate the explanation. Nothing further.
Well, of course, for the public's benefit, you should be aware that at the end of the fiscal year, we do do a tally where we make a number of transfers to even those out.
And if I could, Mr. Fiore, I would, at this time, usually at this time of year, we do ask the school committee to go ahead and motion to balance out our budget. And at that time, we will go ahead and move monies that are in one line that to go ahead and offset the deficit. And also, at this time, since we are seeing we're at 58% of our budget expended, we would like the school committee to go ahead and motion and approve for the school department to prepay quarter one of next year's out-of-school, out-of-district tuitions, as we have done so in the past.
Yes, it's a pretty much standard procedure these days.
So moved.
Okay, so the motion is to accomplish the transfers to even up and also to authorize expenditure of fiscal '23 first-quarter bills for a special out-of-district.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted.
Thank you. The next one that we have is the quarter three revolving account. And again, all of our revolving accounts are listed on the left, where you have the columns beginning from the very beginning of July 1st, 2021, with the revenues that have come in for each of the accounts, the encumbrances, and any expenses. As you can see right now at the very bottom, currently we are just about, just shy of $6 million in our revolving account. And please note that we will be receiving additional payments because we are in May, we'll still receive additional payments for school choice and also possibly McKinney-Vento as well. So there will be additional revenues coming up before the fiscal year is over, which will bring us close to that $6 million in revolving funds.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted.
The last one for quarter three is our grants. And this one is a two-pager that you will see all of our grants listed. And currently, you'll see the start date, each grant that is, that we have currently, our start date, the end date, the budget for each of our grants, and what is left in each grant balance. So as you will see, there are some with negatives, but again, they can, they will be fixed when we go ahead and balance out. And then others, where you're seeing some numbers are a little bit higher, we're almost there, like at the end of the grant, those will be expended before the grant is fund, the grant closes. So as of right now, we have grant balances of shy of $28.5 million in grants right now as a balance.
Motion to accept.
On discussion, Mr. Chairman. So my concern and always has been is that grants that are allocated to the Taunton Public Schools, that we exhaust all of them and we don't return back any monies and, you know, make sure that everybody has what they need and whatever we can do to, you know, balance off the underspent or overspent, however you want to phrase it, is just my concern. So given that we're right in the beginning of May and June theory for some of these is almost here, I feel very confident that we shall be able to achieve what we're supposed to correct. That's my only discussion. Second, on the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. I suppose it's premature, but are we in a position yet where we need to be thinking about encumbrances?
For the grants, depending upon...
No, for anything. I mean, because we are reaching the end of the fiscal year, I didn't know if there was something that we knew was going to require going into next year and needed to be done now.
Right now, my staff has been very busy. They are busy bees. Many of, many of the things that we do have, we have encumbered already. So we do know what's upcoming for purchases. Also, what we have done is the girls have gone through all of our open POs and looked to see where we are now to where we are at the end of the school year and to see if we really need all of those, the monies that we have available in those open POs. So as of right now, we have, our budget has been frozen, so we are going ahead to try to balance it and be ready to have a zero-ending balance at the end of the year.
Very good, very efficient.
I have a great staff.
You do. And finally, but next item is bills payable warrant, the amount of $885,853.75. It's all attributed to fiscal year '22.
So moved.
Second on discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recorded as voting present on page five, voucher number 17742, in the amount of $999. And I did second the motion. Page five.
Yeah. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. And finally, update on facilities and proposed bid award.
Thank you. Just at our last Finance and Law, we had the opening of our bids for the Taunton High School field and track renovation. We received two bids, two bids were opened at our school committee meeting. And in your packet there, you will see a letter from Nezra Engineering, who went ahead and helped us along with the bid. And they have reviewed the submissions of two of the bids, of both of the bids that were submitted. They've evaluated the qualifications and have recommended Heimlich Landscaping and Construction Corporation to be considered, to be awarding the bid, as they are qualified for this project on their references and met the qualification minimum set forth in the bid requirements and specifications. Now also, we had allocated about, we had allocated for the project thinking it would be around $2 million. And that came out to be under, under $2 million. So right now, the bid base, if you want to call it without any of the alts that we had asked to in the bid, the base price was $1.6 million. Now with the three additional alts that were listed in the bid, the first one is the digital scoreboard, and for that one there is about $115,000. The other alt was new light fixtures, and then the third alt was for the new light poles. Bringing those three alts to be $635,000. Now you take that $635,000 and add it to that base price, the bid will come about to be $2.2 million. Now, yes, it's a little bit more than what we had thought about in allocating for that, but one thing we do need to keep in mind are a few things. If we did each one of those bid alts, if we want to call the alts separately, you're going to probably cost a lot more than that because of course, we're under construction. So you get your trucks in there and it's less of, you know, the field is ripped up. So you get your trucks in there and it's going to be less money. The other thing too is the current poles that we have in there at the field are considered to be at end of life. So now would be the best time to go ahead and replace those poles. So again, we could have a long, extensive life on these for this brand-new field. So it is our recommendation to award the bid and all three additional alts because again, for that, because of the low bid for the base price with the additional at alts, we are considered to be getting a great project and the field would be, the field and stadium would be top-notch.
Is there enough money in the line item to...
Well, if you think about it, when I just went over the revolving, right now we have close to $6 million in the revolving, and that's where we'd go ahead and use the monies from, is the revolving account.
Yeah, this isn't an appropriation that's...
It's, I knew it was the revolving, I just didn't know if the, because you do it from user fees, correct?
Some of it does come through user fees, yes, and you can also use other revolving accounts as well that will benefit others.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. Motion to approve the recommendation from Nezra Engineering. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we're finished.
First regular meeting of May for the Taunton School Committee should come to order. If we could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare And the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And before we do the roll call, Mr. DeMello, we have four people that we'd just like to have a moment of silence for. First one is Beverly Spearen, who's the wife of Crossing God, Richard Spearen, who has a post at the end of this street. I often see him in the morning. He's got a smile as big as, I don't know, Oklahoma. He just, very nice man, very sorry for his loss. We don't really have any information on that. This information just came to us. The next person is Elsie Ducham, who was born in Taunton, had been a paraprofessional in the Taunton Public School system, working at Martin School and at Bennett School. She was also employed as a seamstress. But most importantly, her family, which includes her grandson Nate Palowski, who's a member of this committee. So our deepest sympathies go out to you and your family, Nathan. Very accomplished woman and very much will be missed. Next one is Frances J. Souza. Mr. Souza is the wife of former school committee person and chairman, David Souza, who passed away on May 2nd. Very distinguished man, has certainly left a mark in every way he was. He had been in the military, he was an experienced welder, and he was also Knights of Columbus. He got the Marion Award from the church. He's very active in all aspects of the community. So our sympathies go out to David Souza and all his siblings, and we're very sorry for his loss also. His services will be next week. I think on this weekend, he's going to have, yeah, next week is his, on Tuesday, have a funeral mass. William Tokaz Jr., who passed away on April 25th. Most of us know the Tokazes from the community. His sister was a teacher here, his daughter's a teacher here, Tammy Tokaz Kaderow. And he passed away after having a, during a car accident. And they talked about him loving, loving to travel. His wife was his best friend. I know he was devoted to his children. And these, the two of them had been married over 50 years. So our deepest sympathies go out to the Tokaz family also. So a moment of silence for all them and I hope God gets all of them through this very difficult time. Thank you. Thank you for that, everybody. Please keep them in your prayers.
Thank you.
And on the roll call.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Now on the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagans present. Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
And Chairman DeMello.
Present. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes, March 30th, April 6, and April 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Student Advisory Committee Report. I do not believe we have a student present tonight. I'm sure they're doing some work, so we'll go on to the next item. Next item is public input. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon sign-up, and individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who signed the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Mrs. Devine, we have any public input for tonight?
There is no public input.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Devine. And next on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Cabral is absent tonight due to illness, and I have Mr. Barati here, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you Superintendent Cabral's report. First, I would like to lead off with the first item on Mr. Cabral's report, the FY23 State Education Aid Update, House and Means, House Ways and Means Committee Report. As you are well aware, the superintendent's fiduciary responsibility is not only to update this committee, but the public in general in terms of the nuances of how the funding process works its way through the State House. So rather than to read Superintendent Cabral's report verbatim, I will just offer this to you. Most of us just want to know, how does that affect us as a district? Later in tonight's School Committee Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Brendan Moynihan, will present the portions of the budget that's worked its way through, the ways and means that directly affect us. So it'll be abbreviated version of how this work is going to affect the district directly. So rather than read that, I'd like to move on to the second component of the report, was the accelerated math academy. It's somewhat out of order in your writing, but just please follow along. This past April vacation, it was our second installment of our Math Academy, Accelerated Academy. We had this time 368 students taking part, over 10 sites. We had 57 dedicated educators taking part in this process, whether they were direct math educators, enrichment educators. We also had our nurses, site coordinators, an outstanding opportunity with our attendance rate of 92%. And you say, wow, why couldn't have been 100%? You have to remember now, it's vacation week, February, jury weather, most students, what can I do? I'll come to vacation school. April, we competed with not only outstanding weather, but also a little bit of stomach bug that sort of peaked up before vacation break that somewhat reared its head during the week. So it was an outstanding opportunity to see students, and included in your packet are some images that you might have seen on Twitter as well of students engaging in math-related or STEM-related projects. And you could look at almost one of, every one of those faces are smiling. We had an outstanding offering from the high school and middle school. Mr. Keppatrick, who actually set up the planetarium in the high school gymnasium, which he had students go through and look at the constellations and such, which they were extremely excited to take part. The qualitative data that we, we report coming out of February, students were more excited within their math classes as reported, not only by students, by teachers. Quantitatively, we're still in the process of looking at the pre and post tests of what happened in April. February's noticed a spike. In some areas, in one school in particular, in one classroom, there was a 40% increase in performance pre versus post test. So we're continuing to look at that data because all this has to be reported back to DESI, showing that we did host two camps, the attendance rates, which students, the absentee rate. And I know earlier, we had the Finance and Law Subcommittee, which we talked about the grants and whether or not, Chairperson DeMello mentioned about, we want to make sure we don't send any grant money back. I'm happy to report that out of the $480,000 we received for the academies, 287 were expended the first camp. And because we extended the number of sites, which means other students and busing, we will be zeroing out that account probably the next week and week and a half. So I'm happy again to report an outstanding April vacation camp. Also like to highlight the other individuals, Elizabeth Palowski, our K-12 STEM director, our site coordinators, our educational assistants, who partook in this offering, obviously Nurse Manager Regan and all of our nurses, who made sure that our students were healthy and safe throughout all the camps. Karen Papa and Glenn Mata from our food service programs, again, serving breakfast and lunch for all of our students. Although they were sort of upset they didn't have donuts. I guess that was a February offering that I didn't hear until some children grumbled about it when I cut through the cafeteria at the high school. Sue Looney and Looney Consulting, who did a lot of the pre-work and planning with our educators. And always H. L. Bloom, who provided transportation for all of our students. So again, I'd like to thank all those individuals who took part in leading the camp, and most importantly, the students and families who had faith in us of giving back their vacation days to find different opportunities in which to learn. And the final component of Superintendent's report obviously is focused about students. And one of the highlights, on Wednesday, April 27, 2022, four teams consisting of high school students from Taunton High School, Taunton Alternative High School, New Bedford, went to the first annual Junior Achievement of South Mass, Southern Massachusetts Company for the year competition. The competition was held at Charlton College Business located at UMass Dartmouth University Campus. Of note was our alternative high school students who did an outstanding job. With us tonight, we have our career and technical director, one of them, Mr. Michael Raposo, Kevin Brennan, who's the guidance counselor at Taunton Alternative High School, along with our students, who actually do the bulk of the work always from Taunton Alternative High School, who took part in the junior achievement activities. So I'd like to invite them forward to present to everybody the hard work and recognition that those students earned at that competition. So please come forward.
Thank you for having us. Fortunately, we are very lucky to have great students at Taunton Alternative High School. Today, we have four all-stars with us to discuss their experience at Junior Achievement. Abby Euro.
Hello, I'm Abigail Pedro. I've been here before. We went to US Dartmouth to compete in a competition. Sorry. It was very successful. It was a great time. It definitely gave us an experience that we rarely have at the Taunton Alternative High School, being able to compete with other students. And I, I think I'm very appreciative of being able to have that experience.
Hello, I'm Jackie Visio, and I also went to the competition. I think it was like a great opportunity for students to like show what we did because, I mean, we were the ones that made the products. It was our companies. And I think it was like, I never expected to do that. I had a lot of fun doing it, although we didn't win, Taunton High did. But they did a great job. I think every school did a great job. And I don't know, I think Junior Achievement is awesome, and I think they should continue doing the competitions because I think they're great.
Hi, I'm Kayla Ramos, and I joined Junior Achievement, well, I joined Taunton Alternative High School about two months ago. And my first week, I joined the Junior Achievement program. And although I wasn't a part of it throughout the whole process, I can say that I did learn a lot throughout of it, and I am very grateful for the whole entire program. It really helped me come out of my shell at Alternative, and I made some friends along the way. And honestly, if it wasn't for the program, I probably wouldn't be as motivated as I am right now. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who made it possible.
All right, so just so we can take a look, this is the product that they made. So it's a tie-dye t-shirt on the back, has a nice saying, "Don't give up, you'll get through." So they worked really hard. It was about 10 weeks, and they did, I think they did a great job. We're very proud of them. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
So just as Kayla mentioned, we also have a team from the high school who can do this at the Junior Achievement Competition. Just to give you a little history, we started the process going back in the fall, the early fall, and then it was like, it was like, um, going back to, um, and she came to us and we shared these little presentation boards in three months. Can you just sit down?
Your microphone is the one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better? Okay. Do I have to hold it? No, no, okay, all right, all right. So she piqued our interest, and we developed a team. And they, the students started to meet right around, right around Christmas, a little bit prior to Christmas. And I'm here with Nate Chadwick and Mika Sanchez. They were the co-CEOs of the Taunton High School team, and they're going to talk a little bit about what they did from product development, the marketing department, finance department. They had website, they all developed a website, which I'm sure the Alternative High School did as well, and the amount of sales that they had from each component of that program. It was, it was very successful, as Assistant Superintendent Barata mentioned, last week over in UMass Dartmouth during the pitch competition, where they all competed and had a little presentation. Taunton High School and Taunton Alternative Schools were the two top schools moving forward. And I guess it's going to be a decision, I believe it's in, we were the members of the southeast region of GIA, and I'm not sure what other regions there are, but potentially we could have a group of students going to Washington DC if those students are chosen, depending on who they are. So I'm going to turn it over to Nate and Mika. They're going to talk about their, their process and how it's been beneficial to them and, and moving forward, probably looking forward to actually doing this next year also.
Gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Raposo. So the company started, we called it LFY, it started in November, and at first, I wasn't CEO, I was just the sales manager, and Mika started off as CEO. And in the middle of creating it, we decided to share the CEO role together, and it ended up working out because when we went to UMass for the competition, we ended up winning, and now we have the chance to go to Washington DC.
So we, like he said, I passed it on to him, so we're both CEOs. I kind of needed help managing the team because it's a little stressful managing a bunch of teenagers when I'm also one. But we... Around 200?
We spent 140 first time, and we broke even. And then we upgraded our, we upgraded our products from the blank colored ones and the camel colored ones to the ones with the logo on them. So we spent, we put another 200 into the company, and then went all the way up to 650 to our profit.
Like I said before, I don't know if you guys were here last time, but it does give you a lot of experience, especially when we went to compete at Dartmouth, it was a pretty big crowd. So we did earn that experience on how to make a company on ourselves, well, by ourselves, and as well as to achieve to a greater position.
Do you have anything else to say?
Is there any questions?
Mr. Laura.
I think it's wonderful for all of you to challenge because you learn from it. You advance, you meet people of your same age that are in the same role that are competing with you. So there, it enables you to be creative entrepreneurship in that you have to demonstrate your ability to excel in what you do. So as you come up and speak to our microphone, all of you may be a little nervous, but that's okay. That's how it grown up. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Mr. Fury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I get a lot of members of the general public asking that we do more with, that we do anything at all with the financial literacy for our students. And I'm very pleased with the programs that Junior Achievement has been offering over the years. I just hope we can increase the participation and eventually find some way of working more of it into the curriculum because people, I mean, children are growing up without some basic life skills as far as finance goes, and Junior Achievement's a good way toward educating them. And I thank you for setting an example.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. Anyone else? Mr. George.
Just want to thank you guys all for coming out and speaking and sharing your experience. And this is a program I wish they had when I was in school, entrepreneurship, you know, just being able to really push yourself forward and see what you can do. And I like that you were able to see that you needed help, right? And it's difficult, and sometimes people don't ask for help. And the fact that you were able to, you know, lean on a team member, and he was able to pick up the extra weight and see how far you were able to push your company doing that, it's just really impressive, and I want to say great job to you both.
Anyone else? I just want to add that Abigail mentioned that although you didn't win, well, I actually think we all won, not only the students, but the mentors and Taunton Public Schools. So please, you know, disregard the winning piece because at the end of the day, we're all winners, and thank you so much for representing Taunton Public Schools and doing a wonderful job. And I'm sure we're getting it better and bigger as the years go on. So thank you to all the mentors, and of course, the students especially. Thank you, Mr. Barata.
Yep, just one final comment. Taunton Alternative High School's team was live that Lucky Five, correct? They made the tie dye t-shirts where the high school self was, I'm sorry, lanyards for you.
Yep.
Why? So is it true that those items are still for sale?
Yes, they are.
And if so, can you please identify where we can all, ourselves, along with the public, find where we can purchase those items?
We, both schools have websites, and I'm pretty sure Alternative has a, they sell them in the school. So do we?
Say it again?
So yeah, you could just reach out to the website, which we could give to you guys and just us at the moment.
And the school store.
Also the school store, yes.
Great, thank you. So as part of the district, we'll push that message out to let everyone know that if you want to purchase and support our students who excelled in this competition, but actually it's the real-world application of skills in the workplace. And again, starting out with $500 seed money that they reinvested, obviously. So let's as a community pull together and purchase lanyards or t-shirts, and they'd be outstanding. So thank you on behalf of Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you.
This concludes Superintendent Cabral's report.
Okay, what are the wishes of the committee? Superintendent's report.
Oh, motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the FY23 preliminary budget presentation, and we have Mrs. Monahan, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, who will guide us through.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start off the presentation, this will be, many of the slides are the same. It's pretty much the same as the budget process that we began just a few weeks ago, but as I have said before, how things progress. And so, and I'll be reflecting on some of these changes when we get to the slides. So right now, we are continuing with the preliminary budget for the fiscal year of '23, and this is updated to reflect the release of the House Ways and Means proposed budget that was released on April 13th, 2022. So again, I am going to go quickly through some of these. Again, they are the ones that we had on previously, we have them in your packet, but I'm going to go to the first slide where there is the first change, where it is pretty much the budget timeline. So in January 26th, the governor's budget was released where we saw the Chapter 70's monies come back, come into all of our districts. And at that time, we found out that we had an increase of $9.7 million. The next phase that came through, that just went through in April of 2022, through the House Ways and Means, no increase happened within the Chapter 70. So the Chapter 70's money stayed the same at an increase of $9.7 million. The Senate Ways and Means Committee will be releasing their budget probably around the third week of May. And then from there, we'll have the conference committee budget, then some vetoes in June, overrides, and then hopefully a final budget in 2020, of June of 2022. Again, I'm just going to go quickly through these where there's been no changes. And the next one that has a change is, and I'm sorry. I apologize, I don't want to go too quickly. Here we go, and I apologize. So right now, the biggest change, or the change that has happened in April, so again, you'll see the categories, the Chapter 70 state aid, A, the city contribution, B, and then the subtotal, which is A plus B. And we're going through, and I'll go quickly through this for you, where you see that our budget for FY23 that was finalized in June, our total was $107 million. FY23 budget, when the governor came through and projected his budget, we saw there with that increase of the $9 million for the Chapter 70, then we went ahead and saw that jump of our preliminary budget of being $118,729,148. And then, again, like I said, in April, House Ways and Means budget came about, and we did see no changes in the Chapter 70, as you see nothing there. So if you could just look at the bottom where you see the two dots. So the January 2022, the governor's budget increased Chapter 70, that $9.7 million. In addition, they gave a charter reimbursement, or charter school tuition reimbursement of $23,000. That was there. And again, in April, the House Ways and Means came through, no impact in Chapter 70. However, the charter school tuition reimbursement to Taunton Public Schools did increase from $23,000 to $151,000. That increase is $127,567. That is the only increase from our last budget presentation. So again, here's this, what does that mean? Nothing has changed. Required net school spending is $118,729,148. Eligible cost, eligible indirect costs, where you get there is you minus that $16.5 million. 100% net school spending is $102,138,658. FY22 appropriation, the money that we had that was finalized in June, was $92,837,637. Then we got that budget, we got the governor's budget. The governor's budget increased Chapter 70 funding, that $9.7 million. You take that, and you're going to add it to your appropriation, plus the charter school reimbursement. Again, that $23,000 from the first, from the governor, and now from the House Ways and Means, the additional $127,000, you'll add that to be that charter school reimbursement of $151,036. You take those numbers, and now our FY23 appropriation, and that will be the Chapter 70 increase plus the charter school reimbursement. Our FY23 appropriation is $102,720,121. Again, the increase again is that $127,000 in, from the House Ways and Means. So FY23, here's a quick overview. Our proposed budget expenditures, $103,470,121. This is that line item budget review that we had during our workshop, all of those numbers where we reviewed everything. And then just to let you know too, is all the recommendations that was discussed and requested have been reflected and noted in your line item budget that you have with you. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me after as well. So again, that 103, that is with an increase of $127,567 in that new charter school reimbursement from the House Ways and Means. The FY23 appropriation, $102 million. Then we take the revenue to help out, offset and add into our budget of $750,000, which means we have a balanced budget. Nothing, again, changed too much. Again, cost at a glance, remember I said that little money that we got, that extra money from charter school reimbursement, where did we get that? Where did we put it? We went ahead and added it into our supplies line. So there, that only increase from our last presentation is in our supplies line. So that $127,567 in that charter school reimbursement that was up from the House Ways and Means has been added into our supplies line. And also noted in your line item budget. Again, here's the growth path in our expenditures. So now our FY23 expenditures represents an increase of 5.59 percent. So our FY23 budget is $103,470,121. So pretty much, as I stated before, the only changes that we have, have said, was the increase. And I just have that in there for you because, remember, all of those additional positions that we discussed have been reflected in the line item budget that you requested, and all changes that were asked at the budget workshop with school committee have been reflected in your line item budget. And that concludes the budget presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Monahan. We'll allow a couple of minutes, a couple of seconds for our colleagues to get back Do we have any questions for Mrs. Monahan on the presentation? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Administrative Business Staffing Report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Next on the agenda, Subcommittee Reports. We'll start off with Mr. Fury for the Finance and Law Subcommittee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself, Mr. DeMello, and Mr. There were no student activities accounts to review tonight. We acknowledged a donation from Jordan's Furniture for 20 black and white printers and 10 color printers at a value of about $12,000. Letter of thanks has already been sent, and the Subcommittee voted to accept the gift and express thanks. Then Mrs. Monahan presented budget update as to expenditures for third quarter of fiscal On the general appropriation, Mrs. Monahan asked that we undertake the procedure which we do every year around this time of authorizing transfers among line items so that accounts that have excess in them can be used to balance out accounts that have shortfalls in them, and also to authorize expenditure from fiscal '22 funds for the first quarter of fiscal '23 special education out of district tuitions, again, something that we do on a regular basis when we have the money available. We also accepted reports dealing with the revolving accounts, which appear to be very healthy at the moment. And Mrs. Monahan and Mr. Barata indicated to us that our expenditures on grants are going along such that we will probably be able to zero out most of those accounts so that we can justify a New Year's worth of grants. We approved a bill warrant in the amount of $885,853.75, with Mr. DeMello being allowed to present on the warrant for Gilfoil Company. And then under facilities update, we awarded, or voted to extend to the administration award to Heimlich Landscaping and Construction Corporation for the construction of and upgrading of several of our outdoor athletic facilities. The basic bid is $1.6 million. And then we had three alternatives that were bid out for a scoreboard, for lighting for the facilities, and for replacing of light poles throughout the facilities. And it would be a total of $2.2 million, which is a little bit above what was originally estimated for this, but if the alternatives are accepted now as opposed to spent on separately, it would save us hundreds of thousands of dollars down the road. And so the Committee voted to adopt that recommendation. This is from our architects at Nezra, as well as our Assistant Superintendent. And then the meeting adjourned.
What are the wishes of the committee?
Make a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Second, Mrs. Fagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Eyes have it. I'm sorry.
Respectfully vote present.
On one item or the entire report?
Entire report.
Okay. Please note, Mr. Paulski is present. Okay, so eyes have it. Thank you so much. Mr. Fury, on to the Rules Subcommittee, Mr. Enos.
The Rules Subcommittee met today at 5:30 with Mr. Fury and Mr. Palowski, and we reviewed the proposed instrument loaner policy use contract for the students. It was discussed, and we adopted the Yeah, it was discussed and we adopted the, the language in also waiving the three readings. It was, and then we adjourned shortly after.
Okay. What are the wishes on the committee? And I think we're going to need a roll call vote because we are including waiving the three readings, correct? Okay. Yes, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendation as well as waiving the three required readings.
Second, Mrs. Fagan on a roll call, please.
Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
And Chairman DeMello?
Yes. So the yeses have it. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Secretary's Assistance, Miss, uh, Mr. Fiore, uh, hold on. I'm sorry, Unit A, I checked off A, sorry. Mrs. Fagan, Unit A Teachers and Subcommittee.
Yeah, the Unit A Subcommittee met yesterday afternoon for the, for, it's not really our first meeting. It was just to establish ground rules and dates for future meetings, which will be occurring shortly.
Great, thank you.
And the negotiations will be ongoing at that point.
Wonderful, thank you. What are the wishes of the committee, please?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recorded as present. My wife's still a member of that unit.
Okay, so Mr. Fiore will be recorded, present, and seven ayes. Thank you. Uh, next item, Secretary's Assistance from four-twenty-five and five-two, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Secretary's and Assistance Bargaining Committee have met on two occasions with the Union and our legal team. Committee itself is myself, Mrs. Fagan, and Mr. George. And all were present at our last meeting. We have been exchanging proposals and reactions to proposals from the different sides. And then the negotiations are still ongoing.
Wonderful, thank you. What are the wishes?
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Our next item is the Committee, the whole, Mr. DeMello, that's me. So April thirteenth, the School Committee came together, the Committee, the whole, uh, to gather to discuss the budget. So we had a very robust and vibrant workshop that lasted, I think, a couple of hours. But there was a lot of information back and forth. The presentations were well received. And that was it. So we met and accepted, we didn't accept it, we just, we just received it and placed on file because it's ongoing as we just witnessed tonight. So what are the wishes of the committee?
Motion to accept.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Next item on the agenda is new busi, new business. And I will refer the first item, Community Request for Use of Space, the YMCA. Uh, there's an enclosure in your packets. And Mrs. Monahan, if you could please let us know.
Sure. In your packet, you've received a memo requesting for use of space. And the YMCA is currently located on Cohanet Street. And they will be going and undergoing a very extensive renovation, beginning in the fall of 2022 and lasting through 2024. The renovation will expand to add forty new slots for before and after-school programs, which many of our students do attend as well. They are seeking a two-to-three-year lease agreement with Taunton Public Schools to operate their before and after-school programs at the Hopewell Elementary School. Again, the author, what we're asking here is, we're asking the authorization of the School Committee. And so authorizing that in my office will begin talks with Mr. Davis, who is the Senior Direct, Executive Director of the YMCA, and then begin an agreement to do some form, to use the use of our former Hopewell Elementary School.
Okay, wonderful. I think a motion would be in order to refer to the Administration, to work with the Y, and present back to the School Committee. That would be the motion that would be in order. Mr. Viera?
I, I just, to your point, I just want to make sure that any final agreement that we enter into is approved by, by the School Board.
Absolutely. Mr. Fiore?
Well, again, I was going to offer the input that you just did because we just had the opportunity to discuss it. It's a fancy of so, uh, I'll find. I will say, I had an opportunity to hear a presentation from Mr. Davis and some of his department heads, Varumont or so, though. This is going to be quite an ambitious project. It's budgeted over two million dollars and considerable structurally working. Because the Y was originally constructed in the eighteen nineties and has undergone a couple of extensive renovations. Some as recently as within the last twenty years or so. But to meet their mission to the community, they have even more to do.
Sure. Would the original maker of the motion amend their motion? Okay?
Yes.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the William Street School Zone signage. Uh, another enclosure is in the packet. It's a very robust enclosure. And I'm going to refer back to Mrs. Monahan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. As you are aware, we have a new safety officer that is Arsenio Schabbs, who works with the city, uh, the city and also the school department. And he has shared some concerns about drivers traveling at excessive high speeds along portions of William Street where, of course, three schools are located. So the William Street School Zone is approximately only two hundred feet, extending from seventy-seven William Street and just ending just beyond the Harris Street entrance. So recently, as you saw, the signage that is out there, Safety Officer Schabbs conducted a speed analysis in that area. And in about one week, he went ahead and saw that there were about thirty, thirty-seven thousand, over thirty-seven thousand recorded cars between that one week. And seventy-three percent were driving at speeds deemed to be enforceable. He also shared that it is a challenge to enforce that speed limit in that area because the current school zone is only two hundred feet. The current school zone does not account that we have the Parker School and Taunton High School. It only accounts for Pole, Elizabeth Pole Elementary School. So Safety Officer has said, and has said that he would like to extend the William Street side of the school zone to extend to forty-three C. Williams. And that would encompass the entire Taunton High School and Parker, Parker Middle School Campus and also with Pole. Now, if you do remember, I think it was a few years ago, the Committee worked with myself, City, and the City Council to put a school zone flashing sign at Ledy. So here, it's really not that, anything that we can do and that we are asking that the School Committee go ahead and, and working with me, I, um, to go ahead and refer this to the City Council and, because there's going to be engineering that has to be involved and so forth. So that's what we're, we're asking for from the School Committee.
Any questions? Mrs. Fagan?
Well, I'd just like to add, Mrs. Monahan, we have another school here too. We have Head Start also. That, that's, that's not there. I talked to one of the police officers one day. Do, do we have to go through the state to do all this stuff? Because sometimes with the signage, you always have to, they have to do another traffic study and I don't know. It's, is it local?
Yeah.
Mr. Fiore?
Yeah, unlike the situation with Ledy, which is located on State Highway, this is a city street. Even the crossing from Oren Riverway, it comes from State Highway, but it's not actually State Highway itself. So it's not going to be as complicated as the Ledy situation was in terms of signage.
Sure.
I also have to say, I grew up in this neighborhood before the schools were here. And whenever I come to this side of town, it is culture shock to me as to what the traffic situation is like. I like to tell people that when I was a boy, there was a dog who slept in the middle of William Street, right in front of where the entrance to the high school is now. And there was another one who slept on the nickel and bridge.
I'm sure there was some.
They could survive that today.
Are there any horse and buggies out there too, Mr. Fiore? Mr. Viera, you were next, Eddie?
No, I don't have anything to add to it. I'd just like to make a motion to send a communication to the City Council that we request the school zone be extended to forty-three C. William Street.
Uh, is there a second on, on discussion, Mr. Laura?
You'll stand up and begin at forty-three. Is that near the Taunton Association?
It would be. Yes, it is. It's, it would be just about there. As you see that sign right now, that's where I believe that's where it would start because that sign is located, yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, so the motion as read is to accept the report and refer to the City Council, is that correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Next order of business, item three is the Triumph Head Start School Committee, uh, School Committee Representative. So a little history to my colleagues. I received an email from Karen Ennis, Executive Director from the Head Start. And it's the duty of the School Committee to appoint, a duty of the Chairperson of the School Committee to appoint a School Committee Representative to the Head Start Board. And for a few years now, Mrs. Fagan has been doing an excellent job. And Mrs. Fagan, if you'd just give a little history of why we are represented on the Triumph Head Start, please?
Yeah, it happened when Joe Martin was the, uh, in your position. He was the Chair of the School Committee. And we got a letter from Head Start. And all those years, nobody knew this, but the part of the agreement they have with the government, because that's a government program, is that you have to have somebody, whatever community it's located and you need a member of the School Board to be on that, that committee. Because we do a lot of things in tandem too, you know, we, there's back and forth conversations. So Joe Martin said to me, I think you're the only one that probably has the ability to do it at the time. And it's funny, and I was telling Mr. DeMello, I was surprised to see the letter because I just stayed there. Nobody ever said to me, then all of a sudden, they're asking. So something must have come up that they had to do that. But I said, I, I told him I'd be willing to do it. You know, it's one meeting a month, but there's other obligations too. Just like this, sometimes there's a lot more obligations. But I, I'm in the position that I can do that, so I, I don't mind it. I enjoy the people I work with over there. And they always want to know what's going on in the school department too. So, you know, we all, we all need one another's inputs, so it's a good thing.
So I, I brought it up to the agenda because I just wanted to formalize it. Uh, it is a Chairperson appointment, but since we're all in the same committee, maybe a motion would be in order to send Mrs. Fagan back as a representative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you very much.
You're doing an excellent job. Keep it up.
Thank you for your service.
Oh, okay.
Next item on the agenda is the East Taunton Elementary School Screening Committee, the Principal vacancy. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Barata for some input.
Yes, as you are aware, with the elevation of Ms. Stephanie Hoy to the position of Director of Transportation and Student Services, continued upon Ms. Perry's retirement in June, we have a vacancy or pending vacancy for East Taunton Elementary School. I'd like to alert the Board and the Community that the fact that the composition of the screening committee is taking place, where we're going to have parents, business partners, union representation, teacher representation, obviously Central Office representation, along with the elementary Subcommittee members here. And members of this committee are Mr. Laura, who's the Chair, Mr. George, Mr. Polowski. Now, there is an opportunity for a fourth member, School Committee Member, to take part in the actual screening process, if that is the will of the Committee. And we'd ask that Chairperson DeMello check with you all to see if anyone would like to serve in that fourth spot. Regardless of whether or not you actually sit on the screening committee itself, every School Committee Member has the opportunity to view the reference materials, the resumes, just by signing up a point with Human Resource. So I do want you to know that that is in process. The date has not been set yet in terms of the screening committee, as they're backfilling in all the names and representatives.
So, um, as we all know, if we have five, it's a quorum. So we have space for one more Committee Member if they'd like to join the screening committee. Uh, you don't have to decide today. Either get back to me, Mrs. Devine, or the Superintendent, and express your interest. Uh, my, my only thing is, um, you know, we always talk about the adults in the room, but we never talk about the kids in the room. And I, I think sometimes we need the kid input, whether it's an elementary schooler or a high schooler or a middle schooler, to create some input. I don't know how that could be inclusive or how we could incorporate that. But I think there should be some input from one or more than one student. Uh, I think it's something we, the Superintendent should, um, think about. And maybe, I don't know, any thoughts from the members of how we could include a student or a group of students? Yes, Mr. George?
I'm thinking in the interview process, you could have students ask a question during the interview. And then you could at least have them in the process and then get some of their feedback, yes.
Absolutely, okay. So that's something that we'll bring back to the Superintendent and incorporate that into the screening committee at some point. Yes, Mrs. Fagan?
Are you talking about having elementary school kids?
Uh, one or two, yeah, just, uh,
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
It's their principal. It's my thought.
I, yeah, I understand.
Would that come from the Student Council selection or?
No, that's what he's talking about, the students at the school.
No, no, I know, but I mean, for, with the students themselves, who would elect that individual?
Well, it's something to be determined. It's just a thought. I, I, I've sat on so many screening committees here at Taunton Public Schools or at university level. And sometimes you don't see the actual user or the beneficiary of, of the person that's going to be leading them. And sometimes it's a student. And I know it's elementary, but elementary is still, still has a voice, I think. So it's just food for thought. Mr. George?
I've sat on a screening committee for a Superintendent of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And some of the students asked the best questions in the interview. So it definitely is, you know, successful.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no vote necessary, yes, Mrs. Fagan?
Just another question. That sounds like a really huge committee that you're talking about right now. Sometimes it starts to get to be a lot. I mean, that's, that's a lot of people.
Yeah, and I, I'm just thinking, you know.
It's just sometimes when you do that stuff, it's, it's pretty tedious.
Right, and I'm not involving the students at the get-go. Maybe when we have two or three finalists presented, I don't know what the, the rubric's going to be. But if we have maybe two finalists at the end, incorporating one student at a minimum to ask a question on behalf of their student body. Mr. Viera, do you have a thought?
No, no, I would, I would only wonder about their ability to sit through the process. Just because of that age, I think of my kids and I think of one of them and they were probably.
There's probably no other creative Superintendent than Superintendent Cabral. And I would say that anyone in Central Office who has the opportunity to leave Central Office to visit a school, whether it's myself, Ms. Monahan, Mrs. Perry, or Mr. Cabral himself, maybe go down there and maybe meet with some students and say, what would you like to ask? And then, and then use that question for one of us to ask at that time.
Sure, sure. And I think we fought, saw a perfect example. We had two students assume the position of CEO because it was too much for one. And they worked it out and they made it a profitable company. So it's the creativity, ingenuity of these students that I think goes a long way. Mr. George?
There's always the option of having a former student from that school that may have some good input that, you know, was previously at the school within the last few years.
Possibility, but I kind of like Mr. Viera's thought process or Mr. Barata's thought process, I believe it was, where the Superintendent could reach out to a little forum of students or whatever it may be. Just a thought, okay? Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to say that it never ceases to amaze me how much ability many students have. We may think of kindergarten or fourth grade as, you know, little children and stuff. But some, some of those little children may have some very sophisticated ideas. Some of them may actually be following what we do here and can tell us how to do our jobs. And maybe not as, as true at the elementary level as the middle school and high school, but there are some bright globes out there. And the question, the question is identifying it because it's not something that's necessarily typical, but it's something that very much exists out there.
I'd actually like to challenge our Committee to a, are you smarter than a fourth grader? Challenge, and we could see who wins. I'll be the referee, okay? So that's just food for thought. Thank you for listening. Next item on the agenda, there's no vote necessary, right? Just, okay. Next vote, uh, next on the, uh, new business, demographic study request for proposal RFP, an enclosure in our packet. Mr. Barata, back to you, please.
Uh, so the Superintendent is, is bringing forth a question, a proactive measure, seeking information on demographics, the city of Taunton, in particular, homes and the number of possible students that might be attending our schools. The last time we employed NezDEC, which stands for the New England School Development Council, was twelve years ago, pre-COVID, pre-all the new construction you see popping up in the city. So in order to be proactive in terms of space issues and possible enrollment issues as students reemerge or re-enroll in Taunton Public Schools from homeschooling to just the fact of coming back from remote learning, we want to get ahead of the curve and start looking at the number of possible students who attend our, our buildings. So Superintendent would like us to employ or contract with NezDEC using our ESSER funding at a price of six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars to, uh, to issue another report in terms of projecting the possible impact of students returning. in terms of projecting the possible impact of students returning and new home structures in the city of Taunton to form our decision-making moving forward in budgeting.
Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we can learn an awful lot from demographic studies, because this city is ever-changing. Immigration, domestic migration, the flow of jobs in the economy. I can tell you, I was first elected to office in nineteen eighty-seven, and this is not the same city that I was first elected in. And I've only been able to survive, because I've tried to keep up with it, and I know I'm nowhere near as up to it as any demographic study would show. But the fact that we talk about having as many as twenty languages spoken in our school system, that tells us something.
Absolutely. Anyone else? What are the wishes of the committee? Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would it be appropriate to instruct the Superintendent to have NASDAQ produce a study report in the amount not to exceed six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars?
Is there a second?
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Viera. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business, action item updates, first thing on the agenda, Director of School Counseling and Social Emotional Learning Job Description, second reading, see in the enclosure.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, is there a second?
Second motion.
All in favor? On a roll call vote?
Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Chairman DeMello?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Next item, the Action Item Review List, and I don't believe there's anything that we should, oh, here it is, thank you, Mr. Barata. Okay, the procurement card options for central office, that's still in the pending status. Has that been received, Mrs. Monahan?
Yes, we have received our cards. I actually have it right here in front of me. We have, the cards have arrived, it's one card, it has not been activated just yet, but we have, the Superintendent did sign off on the City Hall document that has been approved, and right now, we have a call on, I believe it's next week, where we're going to be working with Bank of America and learning on how to use their, their online facilities to pay, to pay the card that we have currently. So, this will be able to be used, like, soon.
Explain that again, the card we have now?
Well, what happened is how they're going to have, how we're gonna be able to download the invoices from their website, how we're, so it's just, it's just.
Administrative stuff.
Exactly, exactly. But we have all of our stuff already, ready to go, spreadsheets, our own contract that was voted at our Rules Subcommittee, so we're ready to go and to use the procurement card.
All right, so, on the item, the research procurement card options for central office, what are the wishes of the committee?
Remove it. Remove the item.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Next item on the action item list, I see the, refer the Internet Network Acceptability Use Policy, IJNDB, to the Rules Subcommittee. I think we've held the third reading already, so I think we can remove that, is, what's the committee motion?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Removed, thank you. And the third item on the action item is refer to the procurement card, P-card, policy to the Rules Subcommittee. Where do we stand on that?
That's all done.
That's all done, too? So, what are the wishes of the committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Removed. So, now we only have two items on the action item list. Good job, everybody, thank you. And, item K, executive session. A motion would be in order, the motion is to go into the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with non-union personnel, seeking recognition pursuant to exemption three, general laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A- dash three, and to reconvene an open session. Mrs. Fagan on a roll call vote. I mean, is there a motion?
Motion to go to executive.
Second.
Mrs. Fagan on a roll call vote?
Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Chairman DeMello?
Yes. Mrs. Fagan?
A motion, a motion to record the votes taken in executive session.
Second.
All in favor on a roll call?
We're out of it now, so it gets, it's all right, right? We don't have to do a roll call for that, do we?
Yeah, I guess you don't.
Yeah, you do.
But doesn't, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody can request a roll call anytime.
Oh, okay, well. Mr. Polowski?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes.